Twenty twenty to order, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski. Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman DeSina.
Here.
And Mayor, please.
Here. I declare current president, please stand, join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, like a motion to approve the September third, twenty twenty minutes.
So move.
Do have a second.
Second.
Comments?
Correct.
Randy.
Yep.
Question? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Communications. Okay, I have Ms. Gill, if you'd like to go to the podium.
Should I state my name and everything and address or?
If you like, yes.
Diane Gill, one seventy-four Murray Drive in Wooddale. I had a C S O come to the house and she told me about the F of Freedom of Information Act. And I would like to have a copy. I understand it takes a couple of weeks before I can get a copy of that for the neighbors who have issues with trees, one in the back and then one in the front, my neighbor next door. So. I understand I have to come here.
To the clerk's office and you can file an application for Freedom of Information. Oh, it's online also.
And then we still have, still have outstanding issue with the drainage from my neighbor from the east. So. I don't think he's, he's been getting permits to do his work. And I'd like to see, you know, if there's anything a violation because he did make a change for the drain, the drainage, he had like three drains pointing towards the house. And I had flooding, so it's ongoing issue and hopefully it'll get resolved.
Okay, well, I know, uh, Mr. Cage spoke to you last week and he'll follow up what you.
Right, and I'd also like to have some kind of documentation once that's completed.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Catalano, did you want to speak?
Sure.
Okay, good.
A few things I want to go over with you guys is that about three or four years ago, I came back up here to you guys and explaining to you guys about the Salt Creek erosion problem that we're having after we put up the berm on the other side of Oakwood. Since then, we haven't seen any results on my side of town. So what's going on with the Ajax bricks? We recently, after we did that, we spent millions of dollars on this sewer escapade on Forestview Avenue also. During that time, everyone was, had a sewer put in their front yard. Some things I didn't want to have done, but the city had made sure we had it put done. Well, we've had lots of rains since then, enormous amounts of rains, and we still flood. The sewer that they put in my yard does nothing. It's just open, dry. Art Woods was out at that last rainfall during that time and had taken pictures even during the worst time of the rain and showing that that sewer doesn't do anything. So I don't know why we're spending all the money on the sewers on the streets when we should have been spending the money on the erosion problem. McGinty Firm spent a lot of money with you guys, spending money, excuse me, with McGinty Firm, ensuring that those Ajax bricks were secure. They weren't. They're still eroding. I called it as I did three years ago. It's almost like the bathtub effect. You push water one way and it comes back a lot faster this way. I'm not with an Army Corps of Engineer. I'm nobody but a resident. But I explained this to you guys and I see still no funding, nothing moving forward, and I keep losing land. In the next year, there's a possibility that my fence will fall into the creek. Is that going to be my responsibility to get it out, DuPage County, Salt Creek, or the village? I don't know. But I, all I do know is that nobody's moving forward. So I'd like that, something addressed with that, if we could. Find a way where that funding came from originally. Maybe we can resource that again. I don't know what's the move that we would make because it has been three years. Another issue I want to bring to the council is that there's a lot of times people call police for help. And the matter of circumstances, we're calling them because we need help. A lot of times, those issues are blamed on the people that call for help. The city, the village, the state, they want to blame the person that called. A lot of times you call because you have a mental issue going on in your home. Some people don't understand that. People don't understand that mental issues, people don't control. They don't think rationally. So us as parents or bystanders or people that see something like that, call the police. We call the police for what? For help. Sometimes the police come in and they do more harm than they do for help. They shoot people and they say, oh, it was their fault. They called us. You know, blame the people that called. That's not what I'm looking for. I want a police department that actually works and protects and serves the oath that they took. Sometimes those things are obscured by what we believe that is right from the past. And some things that we put in stone that we believe is God's word, that a police officer will tell you the truth. Well, understand something. The police officers don't tell the truth. They're just like human beings like us. They do lie. And they'll lie right to your face. That's another thing that some people condone. I don't like that. If our department condones lying, then what are we telling the people in town to do? If I lie to a police officer during any type of incident, I'm going to get a ticket. It's a criminal offense. If a police officer lies to you, it's okay. It's condoned. It's part of life. To me, that's not right. Police have seriously injured and killed scores of mentally ill people. I don't think it's, they wanted to, but they don't know how to really understand the situation that goes on. They're not capable because they're not trained. So I think the village needs to be more involved. The village has to have control. We can't let the police department control what goes on in our town. So I would hope that the mayor would do some investigation into these incidents and others and take a pledge like other mayors are doing now. There's incidents like Daniel Prude, a twenty-nine-year-old black man who died of a suffocation. George Floyd. Lot of other people go down the list. There's hundreds right now. There's a thirteen-year-old boy got shot because their parents called and said, we need help, and they shot him. So I guess it's the parents' fault. They're calling from, they're calling for ambulance. They're calling for somebody to come and help them because they don't know how to control the situation. The police don't either. So we need to make sure that we, as a town, as a village, gets together and gets something put together so we have something like that that responds when people call up and they say, we're having a mental breakdown here. I need an ambulance. I have a child that I don't know what to do with. But the police come in and what they do is they, they want to write tickets. They want to lie to you and they want to tell you everything's okay. We took care of it. We got your kid some help. Thank you very much. But instead, they want to destroy a child's life. They want to write a ticket and then put it into the system. Once the ticket's in the system, folks, there's nothing you can do. You're stuck. It could, it could financially destroy you. Now, allegations can be made about anybody. If I make an allegation to a police officer, does that police officer go to a court system and have any type of justification? No. There's nothing. Get swept underneath the carpet. The man that killed George Floyd, twenty-five incidences, kneeling on his neck, twenty-five incidents that guy had. Anything in his record that does anything to do that? So a lot of times, police departments take those complaints that we as citizens make and they do nothing with them. They shove them underneath carpets, call it the code of blue. I don't want to see the code of blue in this town any longer. I want to see some changes. So I'd ask the village, please step up, do the right thing like other mayors are doing. Control your police. Thank you.
Thank you. No. Chris. Okay. Any other citizens? I think that's all.
Well, sir, I'd like to make a comment statement, sir.
You have a, you want to make a comment?
Sir, what's your name?
Robert.
Are you, are you making a comment to the council?
I'm making a comment about Robert, sir.
No, 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 it's, this is not a debate.
Oh, sir, okay. I'll talk about nothing, nothing but regular.
Okay, again, we can't have debates on camera. Okay. Next, written communicate, I have a letter here from the chamber. Dear Honorable Mayor Police, City Manager, City Council, on behalf of the business community of Wooddale and the Wooddale Chamber of Commerce, we'd like to thank the city of Wooddale for the ongoing support to our businesses through these tough times, the support of waiving all fees for liquor license, document, permit fees, vehicle stickers, and allowing restaurants and bars to have outdoor services has been a great help to them as these businesses continue to endure hardships. Your efforts are appreciated and we look forward in working together to help our businesses in Wooddale strong. Sincerely, Caterina Yello, President, Chamber of Commerce. Next, got a letter from WorkNet DuPage, DuPage County's workforce development. Development Division is providing federal grant-funded services to unemployed individuals to help them rejoin the workforce. These services include job training, earning marketable credentials, and professional development training. The division is especially crucial right now due to the large number of DuPage County residents out of work due to COVID- nineteen crisis. The city is working to assist the division with promoting these services. Interested residents can learn more by visiting W W W dot WorkNet DuPage dot org. The information is also being shared through the city's social media and will be in the next newsletter. Next, under Mayor's report. So last Saturday, we had our green fair that was postponed from May, was pushed to last Saturday. We had an incredible turnout, more than ever. Normally, we don't even fill one truck of paper shredding. So we actually were able to get a second truck to come out. We basically filled the truck and a half. Same thing with electronics recycling. Normally, it's one large truck. We had two. Reason being, a lot of communities, these, these green fairs were canceled. So we know we had people coming from everywhere. So what we're trying to do, the city is, due to the overwhelming demand, cities, at the city green fair, Wooddale will host an additional one-day document shredding event. Only document shredding, no electronics, that's on Saturday, October third, from ten to twelve at City Hall parking lot. This will be at the City Hall parking lot. This will be a touch-free event. Please plan to remain in your vehicles and wear masks, place all documents in your vehicle trunk. Cardboard boxes will be removed and not be returned here and no plastic totes. Again, this is for Wooddale residents only, so we'll put something out, but I guess the last one, from what we understand, ended up on the DuPage County website, then we had people coming from everywhere, and that's why whoever came yesterday, last week, you saw the lines, basically the length of Georgetown Mall. Also, for those that are looking, still have electronics, Edison Township Highway Department has a recycling program there at four eleven West Potter Street, basically down the block from the school on Potter. They are open from eight to twelve, but their next one is October thirty-first, but this is not a free electronics recycling, so projection TVs and monitors under twenty-one inches are a cost of twenty-five dollars. Twenty-one-inch screen and over is thirty-five dollars. So, and that should be on their website, the Edison Township Highway Department, October thirty-first from eight AM to twelve, but this is not a free electronics recycling, just so everybody understands.
Mayor.
Mayor.
And then Mike.
Yeah, they, I did see Edison Township had something about recycling. Is that what they were advertising on their sign, do you know?
Probably for Edison Township.
Yeah, it said Edison Town, it was on their electronic sign.
October thirty-first.
I, you know, I just drove by it. It was a night.
We pulled this right off their website because people had told us they no longer have it. We verified it. They do. Their last one was August twenty-ninth. Their next one, which is the last one for the year, is October thirty-first.
I didn't know if they had something special going on too.
There is a fee. So if they have something else, it's, it didn't come up.
Okay, thank you.
You have something else, Alderman?
Yeah, it goes to you and the city manager. I'm pretty sure we have something in the contract with Flood Brothers, if I'm not mistaken, that has electronical pickup and hazardous, hazardous material pickup, both. You're allowed to call them and have them pick that up.
But there is a cost.
There's a cost, but why are we talking about, we should be able to do that with the city. That's in the city contract.
We understand. Again, residents are looking for the free electronics recycling. Our city contract has same thing. You can do that and there's also a cost and right at your house. Did you have some, something further?
No, not though.
Hold on, Catalano?
Yes, for the, Saturday, October the third.
Third.
Right. Are they going to do a reverse nine-one-one call?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have to take care of, Mr. Murmurs, you have anything else to add?
Sure, I have one item. For those residents watching at home, they may not remember, but a number of years ago, the city of Wooddale was one of the first communities to participate in the electric aggregation program, which did end up saving Wooddale residents some significant dollars over the amount of time that we participated in the program. You may also remember that after a few years, some of those savings kind of went away, so we transitioned into a new program that brought those, not only brought the savings back, but we also made the commitment to do clean, green, renewable energy with our last electric, electric aggregation program. And I'm pleased to announce tonight that Wooddale was given an award by the United States EPA for being a top one hundred community for green energy, where we not only met all of the needed green standards, we actually exceeded the green standards. So they sent us similar to the Tree City signs, a couple of these signs to place throughout the city of Wooddale. So it's really a nice accomplishment for the council and all the residents to know that not only are they getting cheaper electric, electric rates, but they're also using green, green energy. So congrats to everybody.
Let's just clarify, though, this last contract, though, it's the same price as comment.
Correct. We're still at least the same or always saving. Council would never pass anything that costs more like.
Okay. All right, next consent agenda. I have three items. If there's no objections, I'll need a motion.
Make second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman DeSina.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, I need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wooddale and Globe Construction Incorporated for the twenty-twenty sidewalk replacement program in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Item number two, a resolution approving agreement with True North Consultants Incorporated for Phase Two environmental site assessment for seven twenty and seven ninety North Central Avenue in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five. Item number three, a resolution approving agreement with Williams Architect for Professional Pre-Design Services for the future public works, facility renovations, in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, five hundred. Do I have a motion? So.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman DeSina.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works.
Good question, yeah.
I'd like to thank City Manager Murmurs and Director Lang for getting that light up on Ash and Edgewood. And even though it's not lit yet, it shows that you're committed to child safety, seeing that was of big importance to that area. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Public Works, Alderman Catalano.
I have five, Mayor.
Go ahead.
First one, a resolution approving a change order number one to the agreement with Stroda Asphalt Services, Inc. for the twenty-twenty pavement patching and crack sealing program in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this?
My question number three, but no.
So nothing on this one?
No.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman DeSina.
Yes.
And that passes.
And next is approval of pay request number four, final for Demi Mechanical Industries, Inc. for the fiscal year end in twenty-twenty wastewater treatment facility improvements in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. That is the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this one? Okay, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman DeSina.
Yes.
And that passes.
And next is a resolution approving an agreement with Grace Masonery for the purchase of the installation of five bronze military service branch medallions at Veterans Park in the amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Alderman Sismarski, this is the one you had a question on?
Yes, sir. Do we have a not to exceed amount for the veterans section altogether other than the purchase of these medallions?
Go ahead, Mr. Ling.
Thank you, Mayor. Not at the moment. There was some additional work that was previously discussed there. We decided to focus in on the medallions at the moment. The not to exceed for the medallions, as you see up here, is thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty. There will be additional lighting for them also, which we bid out with the wind chime locations that we discussed last week. And that, that's expected to be around ten, fifteen thousand not to exceed for this, this location.
I mean, the only reason I ask is, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. The only reason I ask is it's near and dear to my heart and it's near and dear to quite a few people in this town. There needs to be a lot of changes in that veteran, in the veterans area, so.
Absolutely.
I just want to know if we had an allocation. I don't, I don't remember anyone, so I'm just asking.
We did budget within the capital improvement plan, seventy-five thousand for this location. We discussed some additional landscaping improvements that'll be needed at some point down the road here, which we will look at next.
All right, thank you.
Good. Anything, Alderman Jacob?
And the company is installing it as well, correct?
Correct.
And.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Is there any type of warranty on them?
I'd have, I would imagine there is. I'd have to look into the details on that. There's obviously, with all of our contracts, there's a one-year workmanship and labor warranty.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Follow-up, sorry.
Alderman Sismarski?
You have a follow-up. Upon approval of this, what is the date that they will be installed?
Go ahead, Mr. Ling.
I believe there is about a four to six-week lead time to have the, it's a custom mold, which will need to be created for the medallion. So after the four to six-week lead time, they should be able to be installed within a couple of days after that.
So we might be able to, I'm sorry, follow-ups, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So we should have it within enough time to have it for Veterans Day.
That is our goal, correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Catalano.
Again, the lighting's not included in that thirty-nine thousand?
No, it's now.
Okay.
That will be in a separate bid with the wind spell.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah. Can you switch to, to the location where they're going, that wall elevation?
Just the one you're looking for?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that, well, that one and then look at the, the overview, that one. So I thought we discussed having them more on the interior. I'm okay if that's where everybody wants to put them, but the only way you see them is really walking down that sidewalk.
I'd rather have had them on the back wall, but.
Originally, I thought they were going on the back wall, the, going around the corner there. Is there any reason that we changed it? Again, if everybody, that's, I don't want to create an argument, but.
On the back wall, again, also out of sight and on that front wall, at some point, we need to take care of some of that landscaping and they'll become more visible.
Right.
That's not happening tonight.
I think, but the goal with the, with the future landscaping improvements is to make these more visible from Irving Park Road also.
Okay.
What was the?
Alderman Sismarski, go ahead.
What was the price difference between having them on, I mean, I, if I remember right, we were supposed to have them on the curvature of the wall or the back wall or on the side, like Alderman Woods said, if you're not going to, if you're going to drive by, why am I spending forty thousand dollars plus lighting if I'm not going to see those from the, from the, from the area, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, as Director Ling had stated, you will see them. They're actually going to be more visible there than they would be in the other location. Reason being is those, though we talked about it a little already, those trees are going to be cut down and we're going to put flower planting similar to that of the clock tower. So that'll actually probably be the most viewable area from coming from the west and the east. Whereas if you put it on that curvature wall, you're only going to see it if you're headed eastbound. And it's not so much a monetary problem, it's a structural problem as far as affixing the medallions to the wall the way the geometry of the wall is. But I'm not so sure I would worry about the visibility. I think once we finish the product, it's going to be highly visible.
Alderman, Mayor.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
I, I guess if that was your statement about eastbound traffic only, everywhere I look on those walls, all you're going to have is eastbound traffic, because westbound, I don't see anything going westbound. And I'm not trying to argue with it. I understand you're, so you're saying all those trees that are there now are going to be reduced to shrubbery, to be low-lying shrub? So you see above them?
That would be the eventual goal, yes.
Okay. I mean, if that's what you're saying, okay.
And if I could add just one more thing, Mayor, as City Manager Murmurs indicated, it's not only a financial decision, but it is significantly costlier to place these on a curved wall as opposed to a brick wall, I'm sorry, a straight wall. Just due to, you know, additional scaffolding and bracing that would be required, just to answer your original question.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes. I understand the curved wall there, but how about going further east? You got a straight run of bricks. Did you ever consider that, where you wouldn't have to take trees down or anything?
You have all the new pines that are growing and already is basically is the height of the walls.
Yeah, that's correct. Down here, there are those new pine trees that are planted, and this wall, as you can see here, is still slightly curved, albeit perhaps less so than this.
Follow.
Go ahead, Alderman Sorrentino.
Was there any consideration ever given to the front of that monument sign that says Veterans Park?
The, the one right here, you're saying?
Yes.
That says.
Go ahead, Mr. Ling.
They would have to be, it is a smaller cast-on piece. They would have to be significantly smaller. We wouldn't be able to fit the thirty-six inches, and we're not sure that they'd be visible to anybody, you know, driving by or. they'd be visible to anybody, you know, driving by, or anyone other than who's walking on the sidewalk in front of it.
I'm 0 for 2. That's it for me, mayor.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like this plan is already ironed out, but, I mean, that's a philosophical design change from where we're at originally, so the, the idea that we're just gonna cut down, I'll use the nice term, cut down the trees, uh, so that we can see those, when originally, it, it's built as a space to go to and, and gather and to reflect, not necessarily a pace to drive by it, I'll exaggerate now, 60 miles an hour down Irving Park Road, that we can see everything in the wink of an eye. I mean, I don't view that as the concept behind that whole Veterans Memorial. I'm on board enhancing it, adding the lights, we've talked about it probably for at least three years, maybe, maybe a little longer.
Longer than it.
So I, I would, I would like to move forward. I, I'm just, you know, taken back a little bit that we've kind of, everybody's jumping up and has the plan to do all this, and personally, I've never heard the plan. I could've been absent that day.
Well, we don't have a plan. Uh, landscaping, so there's been a lot of discussion about those pine trees not looking so hot. Again, some of it's talked about removal, raising, whatnot. Basically, we need to clean up the landscaping over there. You want them visible.
Original picture back.
Irving Park, you put them on that side wall, you know, again, you'll only see them if you walk in.
Looking west, looking east.
What's wrong with the, oh.
Sorry.
Mayor?
Alderman Sisnarsky?
What's wrong with putting them on the one wall facing, I don't know, is this, uh, to the point where the Pentagon is, you got the Pentagon there, what, there's a wall there too, correct?
The low wall, that's all the way in the back?
Right.
That wall is very low.
What's wrong with putting them along that wall?
You won't see anything back there because.
But the, but the wall's pretty tall, though. I mean, and you're there again to patron veterans, you might see it there if your debris's all cleared.
If you walk in, yes, you're gonna see them, of course. Alderman Woods?
So that's, that's just the point I'm trying to make, that you, you're either doing this as a, a visual thing that you see at 30, 40 miles an hour going east or west, it doesn't matter, or it's an inviting place that you go and visit and see things in there. I view it the second way, more so than the first, so that's where the trimming up the trees and the landscaping and doing all that stuff, it has to be done. I, I think it was Alderman Sisnarsky, if you had a idea, not a idea, but.
One few ideas.
Uh, of, of trimming up those trees, because we still have the water and utilities there that we have to hide, right? So once we cut the tree, there's gonna be some magical, uh, plumbing fixtures and water meters there.
No, actually, that's a good idea.
I think one of my ideas was to put a guard shack.
Guard shack, a monument, some, anything.
So, that is right there, at that spot, not at the other spot. That's where the pines are actually worse, and that's about it. So, there's gonna be a landscape plan that's gonna have to come forward. Clean it up.
The landscape plan's gonna be predicated on where we put those things today?
But still, you talk about walking into the facility. If you're parking, you're walking in, you're walking right by the emblems lit up and whatnot. It's, you're still getting that same thing.
Rebuttal, mayor.
Go ahead, Mr., Mr., follow up.
Just to follow with Mr. Woods and not to make a joke about it, it's kind of like a zoo. You drive by the zoo, you don't see anything. You drive by the zoo intent to go in, you see everything. This is what we're trying to do. You come into the memorial, you see everything. You don't drive by 45 miles an hour and see nothing.
Right, so.
Except for a sign that says zoo.
So are you telling me that if we park in the parking lot and we walk into the memorial, we're not gonna see the medallions on the building?
You move that way.
Okay. We're still gonna, they're still gonna be right there. That's where the people are coming.
Seven years of trying to get something done.
Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
I, I can, I can tell, and this, I've literally probably sat through, and finance director Wilson can attest, we probably sat through at least five to seven meetings of the council trying to decide which plan they want, where they're gonna put the medallions, are they going to buy medallions, which landscaping they want. Uh, at this point, we were just following the direction we got from the last committee meeting, um, but if we do not want them there, we can go back to the drawing board. I have at least three or four other plans that nobody decided on, and every time CIP comes along, I don't want to say staff gets yelled at, why, how can we never finish this project, it's because the council never pulls the trigger with complete consensus on what the heck they want to do out there. So you tell us what you guys want to do, and we will deliver the product, but we've sat through at least five to seven meetings with no clear consensus, and at this point tonight, I don't think we're gonna vet this out tonight, obviously, so we can take it back to the drawing board once again.
No, 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 we can.
Alderman Woods? Make a decision tonight.
Can I stand up and point? I was gonna bring a laser today.
No lasers.
There, no, no way shipping forms or everything, we're gonna just take care of the nighters.
So, so originally, this was one of the options, I think that that was the last vetted-out option.
Art, 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 go to the microphone there, so people can hear you. Mr. Lang's got a pointer.
Oh.
Spray, right.
They just told me I can't, I just pressed? There you go. So, this, this elevation here was one of the ones that we vetted out. We talked about the back one, the curved wall, the curved wall was more expensive, the back wall was too lowered, or too many other things in front of it, so we switched from, all I'm saying, I was surprised that it wasn't going on this elevation, and it turned here, 'cause it isn't seen from, like, the, the center, not that it has to be, and, and that would be okay if you're saying that that's it, and that's part of the viewing as you arrive at the destination.
Right.
All I'm saying is I don't want us to cut down every tree and go, we gotta see everything at 40 miles an hour from Irving Park Road. That makes it, that's a drastic difference from what we've talked about.
Nobody's saying we're gonna cut down every tree.
Mayor.
The pine trees are the ones that are, have an issue, that, you know.
Well, mayor, I gotta rebuttal.
Go ahead, Alderman Sisnarsky.
If they don't want the medallions, and we can't see them, why wouldn't we just take all five of those trees down on every Pentagon and put up a flag, a flagpole for every branch of service, and a flag that belongs there? It would save everybody a hell of a lot of hassle, they all get their branches, you get rid of those trees, you plant, uh, red, red flowers that reso, resonate for poppies, and we don't have to buy the, see what the difference is in the cost. I'm sure the flagpole would be a lot cheaper than four or five medallions. Four medallions? Did you have five or four?
Five.
Five.
I mean, you.
So.
If you replace all five of those trees with, with the flags that belong there properly with each branch of service, you don't have any problem with anybody driving by east-west, north-south, not seeing a medallion, or not seeing a representation of that, the, of the veterans that belong to that service.
So.
You will see every flag.
So you're telling me, medallions, as you walk into the, into the park and you see the medallions first, is not a good option? I mean, we can put them in the other wall, and you still have to redo some of that landscaping over there anyways, 'cause it's not good, and redoing the trees, so, you, guys wanna go back to the drawing board? We got a motion on the floor.
I would like to see the drawing board.
Alderman Woods?
Mayor?
I said all rumors?
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I know I got this mask on.
I didn't hear you. So, I want to move forward, as, as we've all agreed, this has gone on for a while.
For a while.
I was just taken back. I don't want to go on Irving and clear-cut everything, and what I believe, yes, that site needs some maintenance, but I don't want to turn it into a parking lot, so that we can see the, I'm okay putting those there, right? Because there's other things that we could add, in the future, we could add the flagpoles if we wanted.
Could we just order the plaque?
Have, do other things, going back to the zoo analogy, we can have more than one display honoring the veterans at the Veterans Memorial, so, uh, we have a mo, as you said, we have a motion and a second, so let's just call and see where we're at.
All the roll.
All right, mayor, you got one more here.
Alderman Sisnarsky, what is the motion?
It's to put the five medallions.
Right there on that wall, right there.
Outclearing?
Well, we'll, we'll address that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. People are listening at home.
Yeah.
So, the medallions would go on that wall as you walk into the.
Right.
Memorial.
Yeah.
We will have to come up with a landscaping plan, let's face it. We know a lot of those, especially where the electric boxes are, those pine trees are pretty rough, and if you walk over there, I did take a couple walks through there, so the front pines in front of the trees, also, they're a little better than the ones to the, to the east. The other thing is, those trees that are there can be shaped nicely, and you'll see the medallions. You're not gonna have a perfect view while you're driving at 30 miles an hour, 35, but it will be a nice feature as you walk into the memorial.
Mayor, call the question. Call the question.
Question, wait a minute, Alderman Sisnarsky?
Hello?
Alderman Sorrentino?
All right, we're gonna beat this record, we're not going 0 for 3. How about, because of director Lang stating there's a four to six-week order time, we're gonna use the same plaques regardless of where we put them. Can we at least amend the motion to order the plaques?
We are.
But we're deciding also where to put them.
We have, we have the, the same guy that's going to do the tower, the new Wooddale signs over there, is gonna, same contractor, I take him myself, right, Mr. Lang?
Mayor.
So, buying them wouldn't have been storage until we decide a landscaping thing.
0 for 3.
I wouldn't.
Next.
What, Mr. Murmas got?
I won't say anything after this, I promise. Uh, the one other thing, just to alleviate everybody's concerns, if you go out and take a look at the clock tower, you'll notice there are some utility boxes out there and some things out there, and we still do receive a ton of compliments, and they're kind of masked by the shrubbery and the greenery and the flowers, so there are some of those things that we're worried about at the clock tower as well.
And, and some of the, a lot of discussion from people has always said, oh, I don't even know it was there if I'm coming from the west going east. I mean, now we have an opportunity, come up with a nice plan, clean it up, and we will see those medallions. I'm not gonna tell you you're gonna see them perfectly, but you're not gonna see them perfectly either if you're, you put them on the other wall anyways, so.
Mayor.
Call the question. Go ahead.
Call a question, all right, relax. First of all, we call our armed services heroes. Why do not we not extend the budget to amend it to police and fire also, who are also first, first responders? If we're gonna go this far, we might as well do more than just what we're doing. This is a Veterans Memorial for everybody.
Okay. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I'm, I say we move forward, I'm okay with putting them on the wall, as long as we're coming back to the council with a landscape plan that we can have input into, I'm good.
Honestly, I told Mr. Lang, probably gonna have to get somebody that has a little landscape architecture to clean up this area anyways, and, and whatnot, so.
I mean, we really, we really could combine those two areas and clean them up, certainly, and do something.
I think from the pines to the east, all the way to the parking lot driveway, we should, should clean it up. Uh, the trees that are, the bigger tree and the one that's right on the parkway, probably the best ones there. Again, again, we're not gonna discuss trees tonight, because we're not gonna do it.
Oh, that's my question.
Good.
I believe H.R. Green does have a landscaping plan for that, one we talked about, so we got that on file.
Mr. Murmas, I thought you weren't gonna talk anymore.
He made me.
Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't going to. Um, actually, we have.
You're a bit of a deviant to the non-talking statement.
We, we have some, uh, plans from H.R. Green, but those would've been specific plans for a different layout, but we can incorporate some of that into a new layout, but also, we can go back and work with H.R. Green, as you know, they did the plantings at the clock tower, and we can make some adjustments, and we will bring that back to committee.
Yeah, that, for a future, for the next budget item, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Vissina?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next is a resolution or horizon application for the federal funding grant through the Illinois Department of Transportation for Phase One Preliminary Engineer and Environmental Studies for the Elizabeth Drive Bridge. That is my motion.
Second. Any questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Yes. And that passes.
Okay, and last is a resolution approving an agreement with Grace Masonery for the clock tower brickwork in the amount not to exceed $22,270, and that is my motion.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Questions on this one? And I'm just gonna ask one question.
I, I am.
Okay, but I, I just want to verify, as you walk into the, the park area, you got Wooddale on this, Wood on this side, Dale on this side, those are the only two pieces that are coming out?
Correct.
And they're being replaced with this larger one. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, just, just. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
And is that an accurate representation of what that elevation of the funk will look like with the Wooddale?
Correct, yeah. The existing stack course that you see on the left side is existing. The current signage is a little closer, as you know, to the...
To the corner.
Towards the inside, towards the clock tower. They're going to remove that piece, cut in the brickwork here, and install the new cast stone piece, and then put in a new matching stack course, as is on the other three corners.
Thank you. Nope, I'm good.
No, I have a question. So on the inside, what are they gonna do?
That is on the inside.
So what's on the outside, though? Still gonna remain?
What is there is gonna remain. Only the inside, as you walk into the park, is what's being changed. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I just, I just see it could have been done so much easier, but...
Wooddale will be on both sides instead of just Wood and Dale. That's it.
The sign doesn't, doesn't say that. Says the full name, Wooddale.
Well, now, this is the new, you know, right now it says Wood on the left side and Dale on the right side. So now when you walk in, both sides will say Wooddale.
Or drive-by.
So you're gonna see the full name on both sides.
Next.
All right, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lucina?
Yes.
And that passes.
And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Woods?
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, just one report. We are starting to get more and more complaints about the airport and the noise, so please make sure to call in your complaints. You could go to, the Wooddale's website has the number. The number is 800-435-9569, 800-435-9569, and it is on our website as well. But we do need people to complain to make anything happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No report, Mayor.
Ask for a follow-up on that, or comment?
Airport noise, yeah. It's just a report. Usually no debates.
I was gonna ask the city manager if he could comment on the new runway that you emailed us about. We've had a lot of questions about the north runway and the completion date. Can you just spend a minute talking about that, please?
Putting me on the spot with the runways. I believe in the, in the response, it was November 5th, I think, is the opening of the newest runway. The mayor main, okay. I guessed correctly. My memory's still with me. So November 5th it would open up, and there's some newer information on the fly-quiet hours and the fly-quiet runway rotation plan, which we do have on the website. But expect the new runway to be open November 5th.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Stormwater Commission, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills for September 17th, 2020. Alderman Woods?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for September 17th, 2020, in the amount of $2,218,458.2.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions? Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Just one question. There was a bill there for the DuPage County Clerk, and it said by court order. I didn't understand why that was a court order. I don't know.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I give a general. It's related to a court case. There was an arrest, and I don't know how much I can actually go into, but it was a case that we were involved in. We got some monies that had to then be remitted to the county clerk's office per the court order as a result of that court case. So it's, I don't know what I can or can't say, but...
Okay, Chief Vista.
So this was a criminal case dealing with theft of proceeds from a, from a car burglary and certain property, that a large amount of cash, we were required to return per court order, and other property was turned over to us. So that's all it is. And then Finance would have the paperwork to back that up.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?